This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, A 305.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, A 305. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the Brown v Board of Education Scholarship Committee. I am Senator Angela Williams-Graves, Chair of the Committee. Vice Chair is on her way. We thank you so much for joining us. Thank you to all the committee members that made yourselves available to be here today. We want to get started with the roll call, correct?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it.
Senator Hashmi.
Here.
Delegate Mundon King. Delegate Runyon.
Here.
Delegate Glass. Delegate Teta.
Here.
Barbara Enman.
Here.
Janita Kearney.
Here.
Cameron Patterson. Joan Cobb. Paris Turner. Senator Williams-Graves.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And in the agenda, it says introduction of members, but I think everybody has pretty much introduced themselves to the public, right? All right, so we all know who we are, one big happy family. Yay. All right. So what we'd like to do is get an update on the 2024-2025 Scholarship Program and Fund, and then with the, and just follow this agenda into 2024 implementation and expenditures and funds from staff.
I am Lilly Jones, staffer of the committee, along with Lauren Waller, and I will give a quick overview of how the implementation has gone this year so far. This fall has been the first semester in which the scholarship's extension to descendants has been implemented. At the spring meeting of the committee, the committee approved 40 students to receive the scholarship for the 2024-2025 school year in amounts of up to $10,000. And then for students who were eligible under the original criteria, we're still covering full tuition, as has always been the case. So far this semester, funds have been dispersed to 31 students at 21 different institutions, and the amount of funds dispersed so far is $127,054. CHEV is dispersing funds in amounts up to $5,000 per semester, so most students will use half the scholarship in the fall and half in the spring. And if any funds remain under the $10,000 cap, they can be used in the summer term. The dispersment of funds is contingent on students' confirmation of acceptance of the scholarship award, and then on the students' institutions confirming to CHEV that the students are enrolled in an eligible program. It has been normal throughout the program's history for some students to not take advantage of the scholarship after it's been awarded, so 31 out of 40 students is a good percentage of students making use of the scholarship. The implementation has gone relatively well, considering the jump was from two students to now 31 students this year. Staff has a few options to help further streamline things in the next round that we can discuss later when we get to the item for possible policy amendments for the 2025-26 academic year. Any questions on that so far?
Hearing none. All right. So these are the totals. And then can you talk a little bit about, we can just roll on into 2025-2026 application cycle, what that looks like? And also, as we talk through that, we asked everyone if they had ideas or issues, concerns about how we could further implement the program, so we can have that conversation as well.
Sure. And just as a background to that, I'll give you a quick update on the status of the fund right now. In the program's full history since 2004, $1,454,957 have been dispersed in total. The program began with $1,050,000 from the general fund, and then additional $1 million in private funds. And then in the most recent state budget, $2 million were appropriated to the fund. So the fund has received half of that, with half to come next year. And additionally, the scholarship program has been officially approved for a $500,000 federal grant, and those funds will be available shortly for the program to use. So all of that means that the current balance of the fund is $1,876,286, but we have a guaranteed additional $1,500,000 still coming. And there is an outline of the full history of the fund and the current semester's expenditures in your folders. So knowing that available balance and how much has been used this year can help guide the committee in determining if it wants to adjust how many students it accepts or amounts, and go from there.
Any questions, comments?
Can I ask for guidance, adjustments?
Anything that we've talked about, go for it.
So Madam Chair, a couple things, and I know that, as I was sort of looking at, because I think we got the email about suggestions, you haven't gone into your suggestions yet, have you? So I don't want to be quiet before, let me not say anything until staff says their suggestions, let me be quiet, okay?
All right. We can go on into the, yes, thank you, the scholarship policy amendment, and that one we have, and it's been redlined for us.
Yes, you have this written down in your folders. We had a few suggestions that we just hope will streamline things for next year and clarify things that seem to be confusing for applicants this year. So in terms of eligibility, that is based on the statute, so we can't make any changes there. For the second part of the policies, award amounts, we hadn't previously clarified the amounts in which the funds are dispersed, so we want to make it very clear that the normal way of dispersing and the way CHEV usually disperses funds for scholarships is with a cap of $5,000 per semester for this scholarship, since it's up to $10,000. So we just want to be very clear in the policies that students can expect to get up to $5,000 in the first semester, up to $5,000 in the second semester, and then any remaining funds in the summer term. We also reduce scholarship amounts in order to be sure that no scholarship is going to exceed the amount of actual tuition, so some students are receiving less than that amount, and that's because there are other funds coming in for them to cover their tuition. One additional amendment in that area, we wrote that an award, when combined with tuition-only assistance, shall not exceed the student's actual charges. We probably should not have said tuition only, because it seems that the committee's intent is really to have any other funds applied and to not exceed the amount that a student receives, not just for tuition-only assistance, but any other assistance they may receive.
So I have a question on that one. When we talk, so would the goal be to say if a student had our $5,000, another $5,000, and there that was tuition only, that part of our money would come back that they might be eligible to use in the summer? And is that the way, am I understanding that's the way that it's currently set up? So if, is that right? Okay. So is the goal to say if they have other tuition only, but yet this $5,000 could assist with books? Is the goal to get them to be able to use that for books or housing or whatever? Is that what, yeah, come on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Scott Kemp from CHEV, and I apologize for my voice, I'm trying to get over some bronchitis. To answer your question, the money is for tuition fees and for books. And so, and then in some cases, you know, with like private institutions, the tuition tends to be well over $5,000 for like the community colleges or for students that go part-time. When the tuition is less, we also factor in the amount of the books, and it's up to $1,500 for undergraduates and $1,800 for graduate students. If the student is going part-time, then the amount, the book allowance is prorated based on the number of credits they're taking.
Okay. So in this red line of tuition only, what exactly does that eliminate or change?
Well, I think, yeah, changing it from tuition only does suggest that they can use that for fees as well, because sometimes in the language of how the colleges spell out the fees or the expenses that the student has, they break it down into the fees that they pay, and then also for the books. So by taking tuition only, then we're making it clear that we can be used up to $5,000 to cover those main expenditures.
All right. So this is just idiot-proofing it for the colleges?
Well, and also so the student understands what the amount then the amount, the book allowance is prorated based on the number of credits they're taking.
So in this red line of tuition only, what exactly does that eliminate or change or?
Well, I think, yeah, changing it from tuition only does suggest that they can use that for fees as well, because sometimes in the language of how the colleges spell out the fees or the expenses that the student has, they break it down into the fees that they pay and then also for the books. So by taking tuition only, then we're making it clear that we can be used up, up to $5,000 to cover those main expenditures.
All right. So this is just idiot-proofing it for the colleges?
Well, and so also so the student understands what the amount of the money is. With some grant programs and some financial aid, when the student gets more than the amount of the tuition fees and the specific cost, let's say they're living off campus, then they'll get the extra money as a refund that they would go to pay for groceries and rent. We wanted to make it clear that we do not cover past that amount. And we had some questions from students that were expecting up to, when they got a partial amount, wondering, you know, exactly why they didn't get the full $5,000. And then the other, the clarification about $5,000 per semester, I had students who were planning to graduate at the end of the semester and wanted the full $10,000. And so this additional language helps us clarify that. And while I'm here to answer your earlier question, if, let's say, they use $4,000 in the fall, $4,000 in the spring, and they decide to take some summer classes, they would have up to $2,000 to use that. And it's a similar model that the federal government uses with Pell Grants, that they can, if they have carryover, up to the amount, they can use it for summer classes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and while we have you up here, you know, in our past discussions around similar dispersments of of funding to support academic degree programs, we've had conversations about putting in language around satisfactory academic progress. And I'm wondering if that's an area that we would like to consider in this particular scholarship funding. You know, the SAP Progress identifies students who are falling below a certain threshold, essentially are failing in their classes. It also then triggers some intentional efforts on behalf of, from the institutions on behalf of the students to provide more resources and tutoring, extended tutoring opportunities and so forth. And I think, you know, if we're providing this scholarship funding, having the SAP language in here, I would recommend that we add it just so that our students who are receiving the.
Delegate Glass?
I have a couple of things, and I second that in a way of also understanding, there are doctors that may pass with Cs, like, understanding what that, what that means. So I have a sort of a line of questioning that hopefully holds pragmatism and access together. So the question, before I go into the suggested or suggested amendments that I think could, we could possibly discuss, are what is the financial sustainability of the program right now? I know we touched on it a bit last time, but that's where my head is in some of the amendments. So that's my first question.
Madam Chair, well, in looking at this year, we kind of did a, not worst-case scenario, there's a better term for it, the maximum amount based on the 40 students that were originally approved for it. And we did receive 34 students that said that they were enrolling somewhere, and of those, three of them ended up not enrolling. So out of the 31, if all of them had spent the full $5,000 for the fall semester, it would have been about $170,000. So $340,000 for the full year, if we include in the spring. So based on, based on the number, if we look at the number of students that we want to accept each year or award the scholarship, obviously next year, there is a potential for, if all of these students return again, that would be $127,000 and change, and then plus however many students that we enroll for next year. We would just essentially, you know, assume that they're going to take the maximum of $10,000 and multiply that times the number of students.
So essentially, the program as it stands is extremely unsustainable. That's, as it stands financially, we're sustainable, even if we're looking at the next five years. If the same outcome happens over the next five years, this program can be sustained.
When you say the same outcome, are you referencing?
30, 40 applicant.
Well, are you referencing the budget amendment and the federal funds? Or just how sustainable are we if we don't get another dollar? And move through, how many, how many cycles of this can we do?
Yes, Madam Chair, both and. Like, if we get the same amount of folks applying, again, you perfectly articulated the scenario of if we continue to get this funding the way we are getting it, and we receive the same amount of applicants, or maybe a slightly plus or minus, I guess, this program is good, is good to go. That sounds like it. Okay, so then, I guess, no, I guess, I know the question that I asked myself was, how do we make sure that we adapt the scholarship fund to balance that historical prioritization of directly affected students, coupled, and descendants now, with the considerations of financial need? And I know we kind of talked a little bit about that and escalating cost of tuition, right? I think you addressed this already, the adjusted descendant cap based off of the cost of education, which is why I think you just addressed that if there's a need, then there's, is there an exact formula that says, like, is it a proportional gap basis or a sliding gap basis that you all, the formula for saying you get less? Do you all have a committed formula for that? Because, for clarity, right, in criteria writing, understanding that you're going to get less is sort of a part of what we're trying to clear up here as well, too?
I believe, and if I, yeah, if I understand your question, it's, or let me ask, are you suggesting that moving forward, we need to increase the maximum to $11,000, $12,000 to keep up with the cost of rising tuition? Or are you just wanting us to, I guess, better clarify the, ensuring that the student doesn't, that we fill the need up to that $10,000 for the student, even as expenses rise?
So that's what I'm saying, is that making sure there's clarity in the criti, oh, sorry, Madam Chair, making sure clarity in there that the student understands that their amount could be lessened because of the cost of education. And going forward, do we want to consider the increase or the cost of education increasing of having that scale of, like you said, with the $2,000 being able to move over or such like that? So just, that's my first question, is do we need to consider, hold that in our hands as we move forward with it? If we know we're sustainable and we have the ability to sort of, whether it's having a tiered cap on the cost of education benefit or a sliding scale or a proportional cap for the program?
I think sliding scale came up, and I think in general terms in it, in last year's meeting, sliding scale came up. And what we were working to do was just not make it more difficult for people to qualify, make it easier for people to qualify. But then to your point of increased cost of education, there is an opportunity, I believe, to maybe do an annual increase of maybe $500? To, or some number, some percentage number based on, because obviously $5,000 doesn't go as far today as it did when we were in college. And so how do we, you're going, how do we balance that out? Am I getting that?
Madam Chair, yes. What I'm saying is, it's just looking forward as we look at having this money and understanding that, you know, we, I think, a couple of years ago, it was a 3% increase for a public university. Like, looking at, as we move forward, ensuring that the very thing that we're trying to do is fill that gap for people that were disproportionately affected by Brown v. Board, and ensuring that as we move forward, we're still doing the same kind of good work. And does that need to be here as, maybe not necessarily in the criterion, but in the mission of the commission to say that we evaluate cost of education at some point for the dollar amount to which we provide to the recipients?
And our internal working?
Possibly, maybe, yeah.
Implementation as we go forward?
Yeah, I'm processing it out, saying like, maybe it doesn't need to be here in the amended criterion, but it's something that we look at moving forward, that we have a part of our, our, I'm about to say battle rhythm, I can't think of the word, but a part of our assessment of, yeah, yeah, we go do our hot wash of what we've done. That's my first question. I don't mean to monopolize, but I got three, if that's okay, Madam Chair? Okay. Secondly, sort of that, I think you talked about, I'm not sure, I'm going to go down to three, the directly affected expansion, right, piece? So is there a, is there space for us to, I don't want to say, I think we've already done this, expand the definition of directly affected? We've talked about the generational impact, but there's this other piece of Brown v. Board that is that historical community impact. So maybe they don't have, if we're sustainable, maybe historic, it's school zones that a district, or school, excuse me, school district data zones that identify as communities that were significantly impacted by those closings, creating this sort of, sort of, pre-qualified list of neighborhoods and zip codes where folks went to school. I know that may be asking a bit much, or community impact into who's eligible.
Sorry. I think part of that is, since this was the first year that we expanded, I think we probably need to look at where we end up next year with the numbers of people, because this is the first year we had descendants. We've always just done it as directly affected. And so that's how we kind of, we, for lack of a better word, we were running out of people, right? And so that was the reason why we added on the extra, the descendant piece to be able to spend the money and to be able to do it that way. So I think if we take a look and maybe revisit next year, after we've done this year's award, to see what we have in applicants, because I think that will give us a better, maybe, maybe even looking at next year and the year after, so that way we have like a three-year set of numbers to see how they increased or decreased or stayed the same. And then we can come back and look at what could we do to further increase the numbers of folks based on the money that we get. Because moving forward, too, we also, if we're, if we're talking about increasing the amount, then the amount itself in the total pot is gonna, is not going to go as far. So I think just kind of looking at what the data shows us, maybe over three years, last year or this year, next year, and the year after, to see what that looks like. And then we can make a better, more comprehensive decision on how to go forward, how to move forward.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I would also say, apologies, Madam Chair, may I? Is that, I guess, too, not I guess, I know that, I guess, part, I keep saying I guess, y'all, I don't guess nothing. What I'm saying is, is that there may be merit in us determining a year timeline, because you just said every three years, we will evaluate so that people know that we are continuous, like putting that as part of our thing, that we're going to evaluate our criterion every so many. If that's not already written, I don't know. If it's already written for us to evaluate based off of all of these other things, so that we're doing the maximum good with what we're doing.
And I think we do an overall evaluation when we start talking about how many people applied, how many people we, we have granted, but then looking at that descendant piece, because that is just a new piece. And so we'll look at what we have, but I think do something a little bit more in-depth in three years to go with where we, where we are. All right, you got two more questions?
No, I backed off the others.
You sure?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes.
All right, very good. And I know that we have a member of the audience that is also here that wanted to speak in terms of suggestions on expanding. Come to the podium. Yeah, come on. We won't bite, I promise. Right.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, everyone. I am, my name is Marcia Walker, and my dad was one of the descendants who was directly affected by the closing in the schools of Prince Edward County. And I stand here as one, as a suggestion piece because my daughter now is attending a university, and she applied for the scholarship, was denied because of the institution that she decided to go to, which was not in the state of Virginia. So that directly affected us financially. So I'm hearing like the $5,000 for the semesters, which would have greatly helped my daughter because of the fact, her being an out-of-state student. And I heard you guys speaking on the rising cost of tuition. And being an out-of-state student, the tuition is even jacked up even more because of that fact. So I would ask you all to take into consideration that even though it was geared towards students or the descendants being from Virginia, to also try to include, even, to not put a limit on what school the child goes to. But I mean, it can be verified, even though it's not in the state of Virginia. Because as I stated before, she is in Alabama. And so now I had to go to, I mean, it would greatly have helped us because now I had to go to, resorting back to taking out a loan for her to complete this semester. I mean, she graduated with a 3.2 grade point average, had seven scholarships, and we still had to take out a loan for her. And as of now, as she closes, she's standing with a 4.0 grade point average at Alabama State University. So I'm asking that if you guys would, would just open up to say, and to look at the criteria for the students. And I mean, for my dad, it hurt him because he was like, I was denied an education. But at least my daughter, my granddaughter would be able to benefit from something that happened to me that I wasn't able to. I mean, standing him, with him being at Prince Edward, he was standing on the porch while the bus went by, and he wasn't able to attend school. And it hurt him even more when he was excited to the fact of, well, Marcia, now my granddaughter would be able to benefit. And when I told him, and I informed him, well, no, she was denied because the school that she went to, they, they said it's not a criteria that she had to attend a state, a school in Virginia. And I mean, it just looked like it just sucked the wind out of him because he said he felt like that it was being done to him all over again, but now it was going through his granddaughter. So I just stand before you, asking you all to just extend, to look at other options other than just being a criteria of attending a Virginia State school, because other students are attending schools that are not in Virginia. And she chose that school because of her major, which they are number one for that major, which is criminal justice with a major in forensic science. And so that's the reason why she wanted to attend that. And she looked at other schools in Virginia, but that wasn't one of their main things that they was offering her. So that's the reason why she chose Alabama State. So I just stand and ask you all to please, if it's any way possible, because it would greatly help her and other students who are descendants, it would greatly help them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I remember, and I don't remember the number, I know it was a small number, it was like four or five of the total number of applicants that we had that were denied because of out-of-state tuition. And when, Ms. Walker, when we spoke, what I didn't know at the time was this was statutory. And so what I, what I thought, which I should have known better, because we don't do anything just based off of what we think. But what I thought was that that was just a criteria that was set up. But can you go through and just kind of explain the statutory piece of why this is the way that it is and it is for Virginia schools, for students attending Virginia schools?
Madam Chair, the statute that created the scholarship program specifies several times throughout that it does have to be a Virginia institution. So the committee could look at what would be needed legislatively to change that. But currently, it would, it would require changes in the law in order to do scholarships for out-of-state students. And there's also currently budget language that affects how CHEV can disperse funds that also requires the institutions to be in state. So there are a few barriers to sending scholarships out of state. We can certainly do more research into what would be required to do that, but at the moment, we, we can't do it.
And also, what about the federal money? Does the federal money have any language in it that it prevents us from? Or is it because it goes through CHEV as the dispersment?
I think CHEV actually looked into that at one point, and it still has to be spent in the same way as our other funds.
Because of the statute? Okay, so the statute prevents us from going, but if the statute should change, should the body decide that that is something that we have an appetite for, changing it? There could be a number of things. One, a straight-out change. Two, there could be a change with limitations to say that up to a certain amount of students could be, could receive the grant, the scholarship to go out of state. I think the last thing that any of us want is to send all of the Virginia money out of state, right? So a limit or something might be, might be appropriate. And then if we did a limit, then what is the criteria for those accept, those that would be accepted? So let's say arbitrarily, if it's 10 students, what then is that criteria for those 10 students who would receive funding? who would receive funding to go to a school outside of the Commonwealth of Virginia? So those are two, those are kind of two pieces. And so let me, let me also kind of give a timeline, Ms. Walker, because this is the state and nothing happens quickly in the state. It's government, we don't do things quickly around here. But we would, if there were a desire to do that, then we would have to have legislation put forward for that. And it is not, it is, it's not likely that that legislation would be put forward in the 2025 year, unless there is a great desire to do it and to possibly get something put together as a placeholder for legislation this year. But we've really, we've got to map out, one, do people want to do it? Two, is there a cap on it? And then three, what are, what's the criteria for out-of-state students? I think those are like the important things to look at. So that's probably not going to happen in the 2025 year. And next month will be our last meeting for this year, and then we more than likely will not resume meetings until like April? Is that when we like kind of come back, once we've done, once we have all the awards in for, so, so we'll start this over in April or May of 2025, realizing that that is an election year and there are folks who may have primaries. I mean, that's just, we're all legislators, right? So I just want to make sure we set like the proper expectation. But it is something that we can prop, more than likely work through as a body in the 2025 year, so that we could have legislation ready for the 2026 year that would go into effect 2027? Is that?
2026, July 2026.
Yeah, but we would have already dispersed in July, right? We would have, so it would be 2027 if we, with that, yeah, it would be 2027. So just kind of setting the expectation of what we, what we would be working with, with this particular situation. But it is something that I think folks have interest in, and making sure that perhaps we don't have, we're able to help other students like your daughter.
I appreciate you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Any other members of the public have any other comments? Any other members of the committee have any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the member from the public's comments and all. And I do support an opportunity for CHEV and the, and the staff to look into this and see. It would be curious to know if we have other incidents of funds provided by the Commonwealth that are both restricted from outside the Commonwealth use, or you may have circumstances where there's a program or a degree or certification process that does not, is not provided in the Commonwealth, and so we could use Commonwealth funds for that. And I think that would be part of the conversation. I'd like to engage on, Madam Chair.
Okay. That's a good, that's a, that's a very good point, and I like it, because we do have like these specialty fields, as you mentioned, that may not be available in the Commonwealth of Virginia, but that students may want to take advantage of, and that could be a limiting factor as to whether or not they do or don't take care, take, get funds and can go or not go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A follow-up?
Yes.
And selfishly, as a Virginian, would there be the ability or the interest of the body to maybe create some type of tieback that if those funds are expended, that the student come back to Virginia for a portion of the time? I'm thinking, particularly out in my world, there's several professional areas that we're shorthanded that, man, I'd just love to have additional folks out there.
Absolutely. That is definitely another point to take into consideration. Yes, ma'am.
I also kind of wanted to be selfish and say that, you know, we are trying to do, as a Virginia, being my chosen home, is that we're trying to take care of Virginians. And I'm sorry that we were not able to take care of Marcia?
Yeah.
We weren't able to take care of Marcia, but also some preference to folks whose home of record is, is, or graduated from a Virginia high school, like, we want to take care of our own. So to your point of like, we want you to come back, and essentially want to take care of our own as we discuss the criteria, just putting that on record.
Delegate Taya? There you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just for clarification, that when this was put together, what was, what year was this, 2021?
Madam Chair, the original scholarship began in 2004.
Oh, so this has been around for a long time. So it's, and so right now, is it kind of in perpetuity that this is, this is gonna go on, continue? And it's, and it's, it's a match with the federal dollars? No, not a match.
Ideally, it will be in the budget. It is a budget item at this point. Initially, it was private funds, correct? And now we have budgeted funds and we have federal dollars. So ideally, our partners at the federal level will continue to give us those federal dollars, and those appropriations and finance will continue to see fit to, because this goes to Delegate Glass's question about sustainability.
Yeah.
But it's a budget line item, just like anything else. And so ideally, we will have money in the budget for this program moving forward. And it's not a match.
So, and this is just a thought, but I, you know, when I was put on this commission, I, and I started reading the applications. I mean, I was really moved by those kind of like two-year story, that when it was a direct impact, it was a parent, it was a grandparent, it was an aunt or an uncle. I mean, those are really compelling stories that I feel like, you know, and as you continue on through the generation, it's gonna be kind of forgotten, because right now, we're hearing from the people that it actually affected, and those stories are very compelling. I feel like we should put the money for those, even if it means going out of state, like follow the child that it affected. I mean, if there's a way to change that, I mean, to me, that was, instead of just going and looking, looking for people to, can we give this to you, or can we give that to you? I mean, these people really, this affected their family and possibly changed the trajectory of that family. I feel like that's where we really need to keep the emphasis.
Well, if you think about the year, I mean, no disrespect to the people, but a lot of them are dead, and a lot of them have aged out of school. So whether it's masters, doctors, whatever, so that's where our pool started to dwindle. So we're not just going to find people. That's when we came to the conclusion, how can we continue to help those whose families were affected by the closure? So then we look to descendants, daughters, sisters, maybe not sisters, but daughters, granddaughters, sons, that kind of thing. I don't know that we do, we don't do like aunties and uncles and stuff, do we? It was a, we do, we do, we can, okay, so we can do aunts and uncles, but like, they're connected, to your point, to the individual who was affected, who may not still be alive, or who may be alive and is able to see their granddaughter or son benefit from this particular program. So I think we're getting to what you're saying. The only question is, are we sending Virginia dollars out of state? And if we are sending them out of state, how many dollars are we sending out of state? And what's the criteria? Yes, Delegate Mundon King?
Sorry, different room, different floor, different setup. So I wasn't really sure where the microphone is. Was coming in on the tail of this, I just want to add to the conversation, to add to Delegate Taya, is that I noticed that Ms. Joan Cobb, the sister of Barbara Rose Johns, wasn't able to be with us today. But in terms of, of course, we have a responsibility to Virginians, but the reality is Brown forced many families to flee Virginia, including Barbara Rose Johns, who had to complete her education in hiding. And so her family wasn't the only one. So I think as we consider conversations for the future, of course, Virginia residents having some priority. I think there's also a responsibility to those who were displaced by Brown.
So you bring, sorry, you bring up a good question, because I'm not 100%, I'm not up on the rule on that. Is it Virginia residency, or is it the institution of higher education? Or both?
It's both of those.
So if someone, to Delegate Mundon King's point, was displaced, had to move to Maryland, Texas, Florida, or whatever, they're not eligible because they are not a Virginia resident, even, okay, all right, so that, it gives us a whole nother conversation. Yeah, that gives us a whole nother conversation to have. Yeah, yeah, it does. Okay, all right, very good. Any other questions, points, ideas? No? Okay. All right, so our next meeting is scheduled for December 2nd, is that correct? All right, do we need to, at that time, act on the recommendations, or do we need to do that today?
We can put together an outline of what the new policies would look like and vote on it then.
Okay. And this document that you've given us, we don't need to do anything on that? Okay, all right, very good. And then the last thing, I guess I would like is to just make sure that all of the members are good on dates, as far as the scholarship is concerned, especially our legislative members, because we all put this, we put a lot of information out to the public, and so we want to make sure that we're getting that information, so that we can get it out to the public in a timely manner, because there may be people in our own districts that were affected, or they're descendants who were affected, and we want to be able to get that information out to them as well. So our next meeting is December 2nd? All right, very good. If at all possible, I know there is one member who has indicated she won't be able to be here, but we need a quorum in order to vote, and we cannot vote electronically. So we just want to make sure that we have as many folks here on the second to get this finalized, so that we can move forward, and then staff can go on with publishing and starting to accept applications. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, thank you all so much. Thank you for coming. I appreciate you, and I appreciate your story. It's often, I, I worked in network marketing a long time ago, and they had a saying that said, "Facts tell and stories sell." And so I believe that your story has sold everybody here. So, so thank you for coming. Thank you for coming and giving us the information from CHEV. We are adjourned.